Good evening and welcome. I'll call the order, the March 3rd, 2020 meeting of the City of Everett Planning Commission. We will begin with a roll call.
Chair Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
And I hope everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting. Does anybody have any comments or concerns about those? additions, changes? Anybody be interested in moving for adoption? Is anybody that was here, here?
So moved.
Yeah.
A second.
Commissioner Finch.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lark.
Abstain.
Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Tisdale.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lavra.
Yes.
Chair Yanisak.
Yes. Okay, do we have any commission members' reports? Do we need, we need to come back to that? To approve the minutes?
If you want the minutes to be approved, we need four votes, a majority of the quorum present tonight, so it, as it stands, it was three to three, so it failed by lack of a quorum, or a majority, I should say.
Next.
Is it something that should be brought up maybe at the next meeting? Potentially is that?
It can wait till next meeting, unless people want to reconsider.
Okay. Perhaps?
Ellen, when we, I guess it was two years ago, we had an update on how the bylaws and how the rules and regulations, and at that time, it said that, I believe it said that if you had read the minutes, even though you hadn't been here, you could read in support. Did I understand that correctly?
I'm going for memory, which is a dangerous thing, but, I'm sorry, no, I don't recall exactly what it said, I don't want to offer an opinion. Although David says he thinks we can.
I could change mine to an "I."
Do we, would anybody make a motion to reconsider? Is that something we can do? Reconsider the vote, approval of the minutes from last meeting?
I move that we reconsider.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Let's vote again.
Commissioner Finch.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lark.
Abstain.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Aye.
Commissioner Lavra.
Yes.
Chair Yanisak.
Yes. They are approved. Approved. Okay. Thank you. Then, coming back to any commission members' reports.
Just on a personal note, my, the Army Reserve, it looks like, will be activating me in the near future, which will deter my ability to attend these meetings, as I will be on another continent.
All right. Keep us posted.
No report.
I have none.
No reports.
Okay. Staff?
The only report that I have is just to remind you that our next meeting on the 17th, we will continue with rethink zoning, and it looks like a continuation of more information on housing, and perhaps some additional development standards.
So we do have two scheduled agenda items, both of them addressing the rethink zoning, but before we get into those, are there any members of the public here in the audience tonight that would like to address the commission on anything that is not already on the agenda? Seeing nobody, we would move to, oh.
Oh, no, you're okay.
So then we can move to Agenda Item 1, the rethink zoning, the housing types and development standards.
All right. Good evening, David Stahlheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and today we're going to kind of walk through some, some things, we didn't provide any additional material to you in your packet, kind of walk through some things that we did actually at the open house. We had one commissioner member, Carly McGinn, was there at the, at the open house, and we had good attendance at, at it. Not as many people signed the sign-in sheet as I think were in attendance, but I'm guessing that we had probably, potentially about 100 people in that range, so it was very good attendance, and a lot of questions and a little bit of input at the meeting. So one of the things, and I sent this to you, was that we did there was a visual preference survey, so I kind of want to show you a little bit of the results of that. There were three boards. The first board was focusing on a little bit more of the single-family to duplex housing types, and hopefully, everyone's had a chance to fill out your rating sheet. I'm going to show you the results of what the public input was, and then you can compare yourself to see where you are with that. And so, these six different images included kind of a traditional courtyard, side-by-side duplex, cottage housing, block of similar duplexes, corner duplex, and then a contemporary duplex. The second board was getting into a little bit more multifamily, and so we had a four-story multifamily, three-story walk-up, three-story multifamily, contemporary multifamily, small moth, infill multifamily, and a multifamily in a mixed-use zoning district. And the third board that we had was craftsman-style townhouses, townhouses around a path, a block of similar townhouses, contemporary townhouses with parking in front, three-story townhouses, and then townhouses around a courtyard. And what the public was asked to do was to look at these and provide what their, what their feelings were, and so they had choices from dislike to needs improvement, okay, pretty good, it's kind of funny on mine, the print is so small, it looks like pretty cool, but I think it's good, pretty good, great, and then some comments, and so, so people did their ranking of that, and hopefully, everyone has had a chance to, to yours, because I'm going to start showing some of the results of what the public gave input on so far. So we look at the number one image right here, the traditional courtyard, large number of people thought that was great, and so, you know, everything to the left of the middle here is, needs improvement, and so, in large measure, the public that voted on this felt pretty good about this one. Compared to the next one, we kind of had a mixed bag, everything from okay to great, but we had some pretty strong showing of dislike and needs improvement on this one. Cottage housing, very strong votes for great in this category, a lot of great on that, and very little on the dislike, needs improvement. A block of similar duplexes, really a mixed bag, everyone was kind of evenly split, but a lot of, I think a lot of concern about that one came out in this one. Corner duplex, duplex, excuse me, kind of in the middle to, to great, but a large number were in the middle, and then the contemporary duplex, which was interesting, because we had another contemporary one later too, quite a few dislike, and it was kind of interesting in, in that, and there was kind of a reaction of, at least the people that were there in attendance to contemporary architecture, so with that. We look at the second board, is that the four-story multifamily, again, the most votes were on dislike, and so we had a pretty strong showing of people really not liking this, this development pattern. Little bit similar, but maybe not quite as strong opinions about the three-story walk-up here, not, not great showing there, versus the three-story multifamily, right in the middle to, to, on the positive side, so this one is showing a little bit more positive things, whereas a contemporary multifamily actually had some, some good scores on this, although people also disliked it as well. And then the small infill multifamily, kind of solidly right in the middle, and then the multifamily in a mixed-use district here, some strong positive feelings about that We look at the next board, which includes the craft, oops, the craftsman-style townhouses, positive feelings on this, so very much from okay to great in this category. The townhouses around path, very strong showing again of, of great, this was a positive reaction to folks. Block of similar townhouses, a lot of negatives on this one. I think this one showed up real strongly of being a negative, as well as the next one, the contemporary townhouse with parking, and so this one had a very strong negative reaction on that. The three-story townhouses in here, again, those are, are, you know, leading towards positive, but some solid, didn't like it very much, and the townhouses around a courtyard, solidly right in the middle on that one. So hopefully, you've looked at your, your own things and can kind of check on how that might fit, what your initial perceptions were, and, you know, again, one of the things about this, that, you know, we didn't ask people where they live right now, whether, you know, the perception may be different if they live in a more of a traditional, single-family neighborhood versus living in a multifamily, and so, so those are, are things that, as we go through the process, we have to take into consideration. So, want to walk through some of the standards, as we're talking about through the different zones, and then later, we're going to walk through the Chapter 5, the use standards, and some of the comments that Commissioner Finch had brought up as well, but the draft zoning map, we, in large measure, we didn't have any feedback at all so far on this from, from anyone, anyone's, most people are pretty, seem, seem okay with the map. In large measure, tonight, we're going to talk about the UR1 and the UR2 zones, in large measure with some of the infill housing, and so the lighter yellow here is the UR1, the darker yellow is the UR2, this, this blue border is what we have, is a transit overlay quarter that allows potentially a little bit more housing types, and a little bit more height in some of those areas.
David?
Yeah.
Before you go on, on the, on the images, how are you using the, the feedback you're receiving?
Well, I think, you know, it is, you know, it's, it's relative, I mean, I think as we go through the standards, you know, it's, what are the people's reactions, because, you know, as we started drafting some standards, it might be, you know, our own personal preferences, and it's just one, one way to go back and double-check that, you know, and I think that we also need to check on the reasons for some of those feelings, and I think that Kathy handed out the, the comments that we've gotten, so there's some of the written comments that we got as well, that might explain why they didn't like, or why they did like some of those things. For example, the contemporary architecture, you know, what is it about? Is it the flat roof? What is it, was the reaction of those things? So try to tease out some of those things to get a better feeling on that.
I guess that, you know, when I saw the images, obviously, the first thing I think of is the photographic bias of how these things are, are captured. Different lighting, different angles, things look different. The other thing I thought about was, in putting this sort of thing in front of a variety of people who have self-selected to be there, I'm not sure we're really capturing the essence of, of market demand. These are presumably people already living in Everett, have homes of some kind, and so when we're talking about developing new housing types for an influx of new residents, I think we need to think beyond, I mean, take into consideration the feedback we're receiving, but people tend to comment positively on what they're used to. When you're asked to draw a house, as a kid, you draw your house, right? And so I think that as we move forward and think about design standards, in addition to the public feedback you're receiving, I think we also need to kind of put that in the context of best practice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a comment as well. The consultant that we have hired, who's helping us with the design work and with this visual preference survey at the open house, has used this similar approach for, oh, I'm going to say, at least, I don't know, 50 to 100 communities in, in Washington primarily. And so, we're going to be talking with the consultants to find out how the results of this visual preference survey, which is similar in format to ones that they use elsewhere, compares with the reactions of similar photos in different communities, and they have a tremendous body of work that they've done, and have a very good understanding of the things that people respond positively to, and so we're hoping that that will translate well into some of the code work that we're, we're doing here, and with design standards. And so, we're just getting starting on the design standards part of that, and so I think that this will just be additional input. Appreciate the comments that Commissioner Finch made about what you're familiar with. We do have to think out for the future as well, not just the housing that we need today, but also in the future.
And I would assume that that consultant also has the data kind of categorized by demographic and/or age tranches?
We'll see what sort of, yeah, how they've got the data compiled.
Great.
Considering none of that, it was not information I was asked for.
Sure.
Yeah, I think most of these surveys are done in open houses and other things, and so quite often, they're not identified by demographics or where they're from and stuff like that, so that's probably a little bit more of the exception than the rule, I get that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's important to, excuse me, to kind of look inside the boat and outside the boat when charting a path forward.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, and, but we're also talking about other housing types introduced into neighborhoods, and so the, the opinions of people that live there is important as well, to try to make things fit in, so, yeah.
You know, first, I kind of want to echo what Commissioner Finch said. As somebody who doesn't own a home, I do live here, but, you know, I'd be a potential homeowner, so making sure that we reach out to the traditional, outside of the traditional demographics who are able to attend these, and have the privilege to attend these open houses is important, but, kind of caveating that, I mean, we talked a little bit about design standards, and oftentimes, and not saying intentionally, but, you know, design standards in the past have been used or have become a barrier for affordability, so what are we doing, like, you know, what lens are we making sure that we're looking at the design standards we're talking about through a level of equity and affordability? Is that built into our rubric for assessing them, or do we have plans to build that in?
Well, certainly affordability is a big consideration for design standards. We don't want to create standards that drive the cost of housing, you know, inordinately high because of, you know, just requiring, for example, expensive materials. We're not going to dictate that in our, our code, but we do want to have good standards that really, I think in the outward-facing part of the home are friendly to the street, you know, not auto-dominated in neighborhoods, particularly in areas where we're going to be looking at increases in density. We'll be talking about some of those areas tonight, the UR2 and the transit overlay in particular, where we, you know, want to make sure we're accommodating added density in a positive way, and not in a, a negative way for the aesthetics of the neighborhood. So, as far as, you know, how they affect the cost, that's a consideration, and so that's also one of the reasons that we have, as part of our consultant team, a urban economist who has a good handle on what different housing types generally are, are selling for, or renting for in our Puget Sound market, and what types of things add significant costs or minimal costs in the way of design elements.
Thank you, Anna, I appreciate that.
I think, to add to that, the, the principles of a good design can apply to any budget project. I think if we focus mostly on the themes and elements that should and should not be present in a residential project, or even a commercial project, then it should be achievable at any, you know, even a value-engineered project should meet these basic criteria without trouble.
Ellen, are, are we going to, I mean, as an example, if we look at number 15, similar townhouses, and to Mr. Finch and others' comments, that's what we have down in Riverfront, and the market, it's sold out, but it's not by, it's a new neighborhood, there's nothing else there. So if, if, how, are we going to have, I don't know how to answer the question, are we going to have a standard if it's a new property without existing, or the existing that are around it are probably going to be rebuilt anyway, or how's that going to work?
More to follow on that one. We don't have, I don't have an answer for that yet, we're still working on that.
All right. That, that was my, not struggle, but going through this exercise that you asked us all to go through, like the public did, the craftsman is an example, that, that would fit very well in a craftsman sort of style neighborhood, but I wouldn't put that out like Polygon did down by the Riverfront. It's, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, the different contexts that we're dealing with here, from north to south Everett, no doubt.
Thank you.
So, kind of want to start framing up some of the conversation in particular about, again, some of the housing types in the single-family neighborhoods, and so when we look at the draft Chapter 5, the uses, identified some of those uses, and kind of categorized them a little bit differently in this table that's in Chapter 5, but kind of walk through this a little bit quickly to kind of get you a context here. Single, single unit attached, so I got, I got rid of the family word, so single unit detached, is permitted in all the zones, but it's not, so, we, we had talked about that it's not allowed in the UR3 and the UR4 zones, because we're trying to encourage more density, and so the exception is that you can do it if it's within a historic overlay. So we have at least the UR3 in a historic overlay, so you could do single families, but otherwise, we're expecting more density within those areas. So again, single, single unit detached is allowed everywhere. The two units attached, we actually kind of have it in two different places in the table, and I think Commissioner Finch commented on that, and need to try to identify how, how to reconcile some of this, but one of the reasons it was separated is that a duplex can be, in essence, a flat, where you have units stacked, whereas a townhouse is usually side-by-side. And so, so we had them in two different areas, we're trying to figure out how we can merge that into one, because really, it's about the number of units, and it's about the design, really, there, and so I put them in one line here, where we would have the, the two units attached in, in all the zones would be allowed, whether it's through a review process. Number three in the UR1 duplex is allowed only on corner lots, but you could do two units attached, a townhouse within there. In the UR2 zone, the duplex, again, is allowed on corner lots, or on any lot within a transit overlay, and then, in the transit overlay, administrative for, for that, and then, and then the duplex is allowed in the UR3 multifamily zone, but the UR4, it would not be allowed, because we're wanting to see at least three units or more, and which is the standard that we had in Metro, so we're trying to make sure that we get more development density where we have set aside that land. When we start looking at three to four units attached, and again, this would be like a, a townhouse development, don't have that in the UR1 zone, but it's not really shown that way in the use tables, and so, right now, that's something that we've been doing with our draft of design standards, to talk about how many units could be attached in that UR1, and we're, we're looking at only two units, and so that's why I put a note in there at this time. But three to four units would be allowed in the other zones. A means administrative, so that gives notice to, to neighbors for that, P is permitted. Cottage housing would be allowed in, in all the zones, except for the UR4, again, we're trying to get more multifamily apartments within that zone, and then multifamily zones, our multifamily would be allowed in, in the zones, except for the UR1, and then the UR2, it's only allowed if, within a transit overlay, and it would be limited to a triplex and fourplex. Microhousing, which are really small units, really without kitchens, very small unit facilities, it'd only be allowed in the UR4 zone, and accessory dwelling units are allowed in all the zones, and, and, but one of the notes is that the definition is that an ADU is connected to a single-family dwelling unit, so you can't have a duplex and then have an accessory dwelling unit on top of that, so, so in essence, it's a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit, and that's been the standard probably for quite a long time within, within Everett for that.
If you said attached?
For the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes.
No, attached or detached.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was something that was changed in 2017, where we allowed detach, yes.
If one of the written comments addressed that, that sounded like it's been longstanding, you know, what's the rationale behind that, or the consideration? Say, ask people, single family?
For the ADU, as opposed to a, like a du, attached to a, or ADU for a duplex?
What, it becomes a great loophole for parking standards, in particular, if you are calling your units accessory dwelling units instead of residential multifamily, if you have more than one ADU on a lot, whether attached or detached, and at least in the, in the past, the code has been different. I don't, I recall off the top of my head what the parking standards are for an ADU versus a, an apartment, I think it's still just one parking space for an ADU, whereas an apartment depends on the number of bedrooms that you have, and so, the, we want to make sure that we've got adequate standards to support the housing, and so we wouldn't allow for something to be called an accessory to a duplex unit, it really becomes more than just a single-family type of a neighborhood, when you have more than the principal dwelling and ADU on the lot. It's in the transit overlay zones, we're going to kind of change some of that in, in the discussions that we're having today, but with the traditional areas that are now R1, R2 zones, that'll be UR1 or UR2 zones, you can have an ADU today, you'll still be able to have an ADU tomorrow, but it's, well, I think I've rambled on enough about that.
Would essentially that become a cottage housing situation, or could they convert that to a cottage housing situation, of a duplex with an ADU converted to a, some sort of accessory dwelling unit? I, I don't know the full definition of a cottage house.
The size of a detached accessory dwelling unit is, is similar to a cottage house, I mean, because they're, they're limited in size and things, but a cottage housing is, and I think our, the standards that the city once had, it, there's usually at least a grouping of, of them, and so there's quite often that it could be from, and I think some of our draft standards, we're looking at as a minimum of four, so you kind of create a small development of them, so it's, it's its own use there, so I guess you could think of cottage housing as a whole bunch of detached accessory dwelling units grouped together on a piece of property.
And David, that's actually one of the questions I have for you. On the cottage housing, it's allowed in a UR1 zone, and given that there's a density of four or more units, that just strikes me as out of character with UR1, potentially in character with UR2, but, you know, if we're looking at UR1 as our single dwelling unit zoning, I don't know dwelling unit zoning, um, I don't know the cottage housing, I don't know four or more units on a single-family lot, kinda gets at that.
We're gonna, I gotta start framing up some of these housing types and questions, and so I want you to save that for there, I think that, uh, there's some potential ways to address that.
Okay.
So, uh, but we can have some focus input on that.
Great.
I just wanna ask really quickly, the, um, as for the two units attached, uh, the town, uh, townhomes for UR two, um, if I'm reading it correctly, it's, uh, it's, it's permitted under the transit overlay, but you have, but it's not automatically permitted in other places, why, why the distinction, like, what, I mean, like, there's not that, I mean, we could accommodate that townhomes anywhere correctly, I mean, looking at the, is that, am I reading it correctly?
So you're talking about, uh, having it as a P is a permitted rather than a review process?
Yes.
Uh, I would suggest that you've probably been talking to our land use manager who, who sent a note today saying, uh, that they're backed up on their permitting, and, uh, the more Ps, uh, the better for them, so, uh, so, and, uh, I, I think that's one of the things, is that, you know, if we can identify the standards that can be done, I think it's good for both staff, it's good for the applicants, but then you have to, again, think about the context of the neighborhood, I mean, is that a, is that a use that you wanna do without having any notice to the neighbors, and that, that's, that's the difference between some of these categories.
I had a question about the microhousing, um, in the description that we have in our packet, um, I, I couldn't tell if these, these are standalone units, they're not part of like a efficiency studio in a, in a, like an apartment complex.
No, they'd be in an apartment complex.
Oh, they would be, okay, okay, that makes more sense to me, it, in the description, it read to me as if they were very small, like tiny houses, standalone units.
Yeah, no.
Not the intent.
Okay, okay.
To be within a building with similar units.
Okay, it might, it might be helpful to include, include that, um, it says, means a single independent residential dwelling unit, and I think that, to me, just, that's, that says tiny house.
Okay, great, alright, um, so I'm gonna kinda walk through a few of the, uh, these housing types and some of the initial, uh, standards and some questions, so again, to kinda focus in on some of these, so, so when you look at, uh, corner lot duplexes and those use tables, um, right now, we have them allowed in, in all the residential, uh, zones except for the UR four, because it requires three units. So some of the standards that we're in, looking at is it has to meet the minimum lot size of the zone, so like, if you're, um, in the UR one zone, so we're looking at seven thousand square foot lots, if you had a, a non-conforming lot of, say, six thousand square feet, you wouldn't be able to do a corner lot duplex, so we're, we're saying, uh, don't come in with a non-conforming lot, uh, for this housing type. So another standard that we're looking at is, uh, setting some, uh, floor-to-area ratio, um, maybe not all members of the commissioner or the public are aware of that, but it's basically, you add up all the floor area, so if you have two floors, um, you know, a thousand square feet per floor, you got two thousand square feet, and if you had a, uh, you know, a ten thousand square foot lot, um, you have a floor-to-area ratio of, of point two, uh, for that, and so, um, so as you end up with, uh, projects, and, and right now, we don't have any floor-to-area requirements for single, uh, single-family, sorry, single-unit homes, uh, and, uh, we're looking at actually not having it for multifamily as well, because we start looking at some of these actually infill opportunities, it's one way to, um, see whether or not the mass of the building can help fit within that neighborhood, and so a floor-to-area ratio limits the size, uh, of the overall structure to what would be like a single unit, so for example, you could have a floor-to-area ratio, it would end up with, uh, you know, a building footprint that would be similar to a single-family home, but you would end up getting two units, so clearly the units would be smaller in size, um, than, than maybe a, a single-family home, but you would have two units, but, uh, it would fit the scale of the neighborhood, and so, that's one of the things, uh, we've been looking at, and again, trying to get some feedback, uh, from the commission on whether that, that's a, the right approach. In terms of open space, I think the, uh, floor-to-area ratio helps get that, but we'd also be looking at some required open space, uh, so that we make sure that we're not building the, the whole property out, and so that we have, uh, yards and, uh, backyards and places, uh, for people. Um, off-street parking, need to meet the standards, if you have two units, you're gonna have to meet the, the parking standard for, for two units, uh, and, uh, and when we started framing up these new zones quite a long time ago, one of the things that we talked about for these, these duplexes is creating the owner opportunity in the UR one zone, and so we're not gonna require owner occupancy, because we don't wanna monitor it, but we would create that owner opportunity, and so in order to do this, you would create a land division of some sort, whether it's a condominium, or a, what we call a unit lot subdivision, Dave Tyler came and presented those things, uh, to you, so that they'd have to bring in that as well, and so they create, um, both of those, there would basically be, uh, potential for two lots, and so someone could sell off, uh, one of them, uh, to someone, and, but we wouldn't require the owner occupancy, but we would kind of set that up to be, uh, have the potential for that.
Can I ask, I'm not sure I quite understood, are you? So, so, so some we could put in a duplex like this and essentially sell it, each individual unit fee simple?
Correct.
Without necessarily condominiumizing?
Through the unit lot subdivision, they wouldn't have to condominiumize, correct. They could also condominiumize, and so the land stays, uh, in one unit, uh, but they could do either approach.
You said that's gonna be something that's encouraged but not required? How, how does that, how would that work?
The draft of what we're talking about right now is required.
In the, in the, in the UR one zone?
In the UR one zone, that, so they would have to create that, that land division so that that's an opportunity to have more ownership within that area, um, but we're not gonna monitor it for owner occupancy itself.
David, I, I think all of the standards are great, um, relative to open space, I'm assuming that that will be achieved through, uh, prescribed setbacks?
Uh, in large measure, it probably would be through prescribed setbacks, yeah.
I guess I just wanna say, I think that, that ownership, that's, that's very interesting, I, I think that's great, because what I was initially thinking when I, before I saw that is, you know, sure, we're, by allowing something like this in certain areas in a corner lot, you're increasing maybe, um, density, but you're, you're really just maybe creating opportunities for investors to come in, and whereas they could sell one house and, and make one profit, now you're just making it more profitable for investors, which doesn't really do anything to address, kinda the, the secondary issue of maybe affordability of, of, of that density, so I think something like that, you know, I don't know, maybe, I don't, I guess I don't know that necessarily affects the, the affordability of it, but certainly, I mean, getting toward the ownership aspect of, of these neighborhoods, I think is, um, creating that, that, that ownership of space and, and, I, I just think that, that sounds like a good idea.
I think there's a couple objectives behind it potentially, um, you know, one is that if we don't, uh, do this, is that one of the units is definitely gonna be a rental unit.
Right.
Because there's, you can't sell it off separately, uh, so the owner could live in the other, and, or they could both be rental units, and so that was one of the fears that, uh, that we heard, but, uh, we also, when I think about the affordability, um, the, the availability of land, I mean, if you remember some of the single-family homes and what the prices are, they're out of touch with most people with median incomes within the community right now, and so, uh, these units would be smaller, but it might be at that affordable price point, and it, and it might also be within a neighborhood where they can get into that neighborhood as well, and not have to, uh, go to, uh, the townhomes on, on the Riverfront, I mean, they want a little bit more of a, a traditional neighborhood, so. So again, uh, so these are some of the standards that we've been working on drafting, and so, um, so we'd be coming back with you with, you know, the details behind some of this stuff, so, uh, perhaps, uh, later, if anything, um, hits you with any of this stuff, you know, send us notes and let us know, but. So the next, uh, category I wanna look at is duplexes and two-unit townhouses, so same thing as the corner lot duplexes, uh, allowed in the UR one, two, and three zones, um, so what we're looking at for some design standards is, uh, in the UR one, it has to be side, uh, side by side, so again, kind of the townhouse, so not stacked units in that UR one zone, uh, and also in the UR two, uh, but that has the potential within the UR two with a transit overlay to be stacked, so, uh, flat, so as you get closer to the transit quarters, it's a little bit more of a transition neighborhood to allow the, the stacking of units, uh, within that area. Similar to the corner lot duplex, looking at standards to meet the minimum lot size of the zone, on the UR two zone, we're looking at forty-five hundred square foot lots, so if you don't have a forty-five hundred square foot lot in the UR two zone, you're, this isn't an option for you, kind of thing, so you have to meet that minimum size, uh, we do have, uh, an option for smaller, uh, in the UR three zone, and because, and I think that, uh, um, maybe at the, one of the last meetings, we had talked about this, is that we had some large lot sizes in, in some of these zones, and that was to try to make sure that we get some assemblage, and so we're allowing, uh, those lots that already been divided to do this, and so we're having the, kind of an exception in the UR three to, uh, looking at for, uh, to do this within that area. Same, same concept about looking at some floor-to-area ratio, and, uh, that will limit the size to a single unit again, so, uh, but, uh, potentially as you scale up to the UR two, and the UR two with a transit overlay, allowing more FAR, so you allow more development within that, so it'd be a, a tiered approach, so, uh, lower FAR in the UR one zones to a higher, uh, FAR in the UR two with a transit overlay, so.
Does the city's definition of FAR, uh, only include above-ground living area, or does it also include basement space?
Good question, I, I, I don't know.
I, I think it does not include basement space that's at least, I think, three-quarters below grade.
Yeah, it's a good thing for us to look at, because when we're thinking about the character of the neighborhood here, in large measure, it's what's above grade, so, um...
Yeah, I, I would say, I mean, to the extent that, uh, a developer wants to, uh, dig a basement, um, I would encourage the addition of that space within a envelope, because it's just more living area potentially, but from an aesthetic standpoint, on the outside, it's really no change.
I agree.
If I may have a follow-up question, I mean, would that be, like, with the, would you be allowed to have the, your accessory dwelling unit, like partially three-quarters submerged, like an English basement for that home in that situation, and have it not count towards the overall, um, square footage, or the overall, overall floor area ratio of your, your building?
Uh, something to look at, yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are good details to look at, yeah, kind of thing, so. And I don't think I, yeah, well, I'm not gonna get into the, into the weeds too far here with you right now, so, um, so again, open space, uh, FAR and some required open space, so still, uh, doing that, um, and then, uh, still off-street parking meeting standards, you know, so we're not looking at changing any of the off-street parking requirements, we did a big transformational change in two thousand eighteen when we did the Metro Everett, we did that citywide, uh, but the same thing here in the UR one is to, uh, create the ownership opportunity in the UR one zone as well, so again, they can do a unit lot subdivision or condominium, and, uh, so that, uh, that is an opportunity for that to happen in that area. That does add costs, uh, it's one of the things that we'll be looking at, the economic analysis, because to do, to do the land division, whether it's condominium papers or the unit lot subdivision, uh, it will add some, uh, costs upfront to the process.
So, so with the, I just, really question, so with the subdivision, so say you do a side-by-side duplex as such, and you're, and, but it would not, you would not be allowed to do a, um, for example, an attached accessory dwelling unit, or detached accessory dwelling unit for those subdivisions, because they are, because they share a common wall, or, I'm just trying to, trying to understand what would be authorized in that situation, like, for?
Well, right now, the accessory dwelling unit is only attached to a, a single unit, so not to these duplexes, so we're not talking about another unit in addition to this.
Yeah, but like, once the subdivision happens, and when one person, a new person purchases a new lot, what a new fee simple lot, would they be allowed to do an attached accessory dwelling unit in the, a detached accessory dwelling unit in the back, or would they, because it's, you know, technically, they're a lot, they just have a shared wall, would that shared wall negate the ability to do that, just, I wanna make sure I understand the, uh?
Under the current code, no.
Okay.
Because it's limited to only being accessory to a single-family detached dwelling.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say that the scenario that Commissioner Lawrence just identified, it doesn't provide me Harper and so long as the resulting, uh, lot, um, meets the minimum lot requirements, if the resulting, um, unit lot subdivision, i- if it meets the underlying zoning, uh, lot size, probably should be able to have an ADU of some kind.
And usually what we would expect, and you would start out with a lot that was in min- minimum lot size requirement, you can build a duplex on it, but you have to then create either the condominium or the unit lot subdivision, which would be a lot line running down the middle of the building.
Right.
And each of those resultant lots would not meet the minimum for, uh, the zone.
Precisely.
And so, yeah, when, when you start adding density on top of density, that's when you start, um, running into some compatibility issues in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I think it would apply in a very, very limited instances, but I guess, if they did meet the.
If they did, yeah, that's something for us to think about.
Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on to that subject, accessory dwelling units, um, allowed in all the UR zones, and again, uh, right now, it's written as accessory to a single-family unit, uh, not a duplex, so looking at the same standards as, uh, two thousand seventeen ordinance, I went through, uh, quite a bit of time on that with some exceptions for size and height, um, and so, what we've been, uh, working with, uh, size and height is trying to make it, uh, consistent with the accessory residential structures, uh, for example, uh, it's possible, um, that based on standards, that the, uh, accessory, uh, garage can be, oh, let's say nine hundred square feet, but the, what's on top of it can only be eight hundred square feet, and so, trying to make the, uh, the footprint and the floor area is, uh, one and the same, so that those standards are, are not there, um, you know, that you can't distinguish, uh, between the, them, and also we have inconsistent heights, is that you could build a, a garage, uh, to one height, but you can build the accessory dwelling unit to another height, and so trying to, uh, align all those heights, uh, with some allowances for, uh, taller, taller buildings along alleys, uh, versus when there, uh, there's no alleys within there, so, uh, we're looking at a little bit of, uh, adjustment to the height, uh, standards that we presented to you, I think, back in December, uh, on this, this issue, kind of thing, so, it's one of the things that we've, uh, come up with here. Again, uh, parking, uh, same standards, uh, then ownership, uh, so right now, under the code, uh, one of the units must be owner occupied in all the zones, um, and so looking at just that owner occupancy requirement again in the UR one zone.
Hasn't there been some conversation around, for best practices with these, removing the owner occupi- occupancy requirement, I, I remember there's, like, reticence for a lot of banks to finance the construction of these, because if they have to see, if they have to claim the, uh, if they, if they have to foreclose and claim the property, then they wouldn't be able to either rent the apartment, or, uh, you, like, is there been, what's, what is the new best practice, because I've heard recent discussion around it?
Many communities require owner occupancy of one of the units, uh, that's not uncommon, uh, there's been some talk in the legislature about removing that requirement, uh, about preempting local zoning for even allowing, uh, the number of accessory dwelling units that you could find, you could have, or, uh, some goofy things like, uh, you can't require the parking, uh, for accessory dwelling units unless the owner has, owns more than five ADUs somewhere, then you can start requiring more parking, I'm not sure where the legislature comes up with some of this stuff, but, uh, they, they, they have lots of different, uh, things, or, I think a few of these have died, or, or, some of them are on their way to perhaps, uh, getting approved, and so, that may affect us in another couple of weeks here, uh, we may have a different scenario than what our code now allows.
Okay, cottage housing, um, so, right now, in the draft use table, we have that in the UR one, two, and three zones, uh, looking at for design, some limits on the dwelling size, and limits on the total, uh, development size, um, so getting to Commissioner Finch's comments, we're, we're looking at limiting. at limits on total, total units for density. And so, so we'd have some density standards, so you wouldn't be able to do, say, four cottage housing units on a 7,000 square foot lot. So we would have some density requirements, so you're going to need a bigger piece of property in order to do the cottage housing. So, right now, what we're looking at is a little bit higher than the underlying zone, so it's not necessarily one per 7,000, having a little bit of incentive to do these projects and the additional time and expense and that, but, so you could probably get another unit off of a piece of property, but not a significant density boost as part of that.
For example, instead of a four-lot short subdivision with each building on each individual lot owned by a different person, it might be five or six cottage units that you would get on that same original property, so that there's a little bit of a bonus and incentive to, to do cottage housing with some design standards.
I'm looking at these, talking about the off-street parking on some of those, but, I guess I wonder how feasible some of those projects become when they're managing with the, with the parking. I mean, are, in some ways, are we, are we creating this, this standard for, for housing, but, but because of, I guess, it's hard for me to imagine where we necessarily would put this in the city, where this would even come up. But in some of these, when you, well, I was looking back at the ADUs, for example, I would imagine that, in a lot of cases, the biggest impediment potentially for someone putting an ADU on their property would be the, potentially the off-street parking requirement. And I'm wondering, even with cottage housing, too, are we creating this idea of cottage housing, but some of these standards, like, maybe specifically the parking, would make it really not feasible that anyone would ever want to put one somewhere?
I was going to ask a question about parking, too. Are there allowances for parking not on this parcel, but an adjacent parcel, or does it all have, is it required to be?
Well, they would have to be somehow tied together with a covenant, so that you couldn't sell off the parking for this development to somebody who then redeveloped that property and take away all the parking for this development. But typically with a cottage development, the parking is not like an individual garage for each dwelling unit, it's off to the side of, or back of the property, where you have parking either outside of a structure, or maybe within some small parking structures, carports or something of that nature, in scale with the dwelling units that you have on the property. But usually, it's all kind of clustered together, so that you don't have a garage with each cottage housing unit. And then, instead of having front yards and rear yards, you kind of cluster the open space, or you have a common open space that's central to the cottages, more of a communal living arrangement or sharing of the open space, kind of like a multifamily project, only on a much smaller scale and in a single-family neighborhood.
So in this instance, parking would not be required to be covered?
We do not require that residential parking be within a structure.
Alan, how out-of-date are the cottages that are out by the, on Everett Mallway by Arby's?
I don't know what you mean by out-of-date. How old are they?
No, no, but it is, what we're talking, I was just thinking, you know, you, yeah, you might want to go look at it, because it's a pretty nice concept.
Yeah, in fact, we did, Dave Tyler and I went out and looked at those when they were under construction and brand-new, and...
But now they're tannish?
They're probably, yeah, older than that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did a very nice job on those. They're, they're small units, and arranged around kind of a common open space like that, and turned out very nicely.
And that was in a commercial zone, right?
Yeah, that, that is in a commercial zone, so.
Previously, we did allow cottage housing in some of these residential zones, it was only in the commercial zones where it was allowed.
Well, I think, David, that's a good point. You know, I think that there are, there probably aren't very many lots that are large enough to really accommodate a meaningful cottage housing development within the UR1 and UR2 zones. I can think of a few, but there aren't many. And then it comes down to context within the existing neighborhood, despite the fact that there are these outlier larger parcels that still remain. So I guess, for me, it comes down to density, because if I look at the, the form of cottage housing and the use of resources to build smaller detached homes, and the resulting open space, it strikes me that maybe a detached duplex is a more efficient use of, of land. You've got a common wall, you're reducing costs, and presumably, you've got more open space as well. And it likely fits better into the context of the existing urban fabric. So, I guess it would be good to really understand where this exactly might apply in the UR1 and UR2 zones, because I'm not sure that from a building form type, front doors facing the street, you know, cars coming off the alley sort of thing, this seems like an outlier to me.
And that, you're, you're right, that there's not a whole lot of vacant land out there, very little where you could have enough lot area to do something like this. And so, it would, if it's done, it would be probably a very limited basis, and sometimes we have parcels that are tucked away behind houses that are in a conventional subdivision that might be hillside, or have some challenges that you couldn't do a subdivision on, but you could cluster the housing together on a cottage basis and, and create something. So it's, yeah, not going to be used very often, I would think, because of the reasons that you cited, but we'd like to include it as an option.
We had folks about two years ago that were looking for property to do a cottage housing, and they ended up doing their, their project in Marysville, actually, so. And partly, we didn't have the opportunities in some of the residential zones, and so they weren't finding any property that fit their, their needs. Multifamily housing, so UR3, UR4 zones for density, looking at no limits on density. Right now, in the UR, in, in metro and our urban residential zone, we don't have density limits either. Basically, looking at heights, lot coverage setbacks, open space and parking, those are the things that really will dictate density. Design, looking at some standards of front entrances and garages. Open space, again, outdoor and common open space required, looking at some standards for larger projects with a lot of units, they have some required common outdoor space, so that makes sure that we have some, some good outdoor space, and then off-street parking, again, meeting, meeting the standards, so. I talked about a little bit, a few details, things that caught the eyes in a little bit in the visual preference survey, so this is one of the images that was there. And so, when we look at some entrance porch and garage requirements, one of the things, is looking at the front entrance, and having, looking at some standards to face the street and not to a porch. And so, this project meets that standard, faces the street, and it's onto the porch. But what this one doesn't do is, for some of the standards looking at, is that the, the height above grade is at least eight feet to ten, you know, maybe up to 10 feet there, and so you don't really have that presence along the street there. And then, the other thing that it does is, has a long facade of garage, basically, and nothing but, but parking here. And so, it's really, is not as appealing to the streetscape and the visual sense of neighborhood here as much. But it was interesting that the, you know, the, again, the review is, how do we do the, the visual preference survey? People don't, didn't react, I mean, they, they reacted negatively, more so than some other things, but they didn't react as negatively as I do, for example, to this image. I would not want to live here, hopefully no one listening lives here. But wouldn't be my first, first choice, as part of it, I give it that. So, anyhow, looking at some of those standards about, again, the, there are some other things about some fire escapes and stairs. There's images, I think I presented to you last fall, that showed basically a second floor where someone added a unit, and they basically put their fire escape right in the front of the facade and came down, kind of thing. So, you know, you start seeing that, and it's like, you know, you have to write code to, to say you can't do that, because the fire guys will say you need a fire escape, they don't care where it goes, as long as you can get out. But from a planning, so we're looking at fire escapes and stairs not allowed on the front facade, so they do it on the side, back of the property, but not the front. And again, garage, looking at, in some cases, some setbacks on the front facade, so that you don't have basically that, that presence of the garage, you know, welcome to our garage. Sometimes they call them snout houses. And then also, an important thing is a setback, wherever that garage is, make sure it's setback from the sidewalk, so that when people fill their garage with all their, their toys, that they don't park and block the sidewalk, which is something that can happen. So making sure wherever that garage is, is that there's adequate place for someone to park behind that as well, so. So with that, those are some of the, kind of the, the big issues and, that we're looking at for some of the standards, and if we, if you think that we're kind of on the right track, our intention is to come back with more details behind a lot of these things, so that we can continue to dive into this, so.
I would just, I mean, for my time living in DC, all the townhomes, a lot like that, a lot in the same size, were, had no garages. And I kind of agree with you from an aesthetic point, but, and from a street engagement point, but also from a point of, like, that's space that could become an accessory dwelling unit, that could be a home. And, you know, for me, in my mind, I think one of the things that we need to do is make sure that all residents, all space, all places where people live, we are gearing that towards transit, because transit should be the standard, not, you know, it should be about 50% of our, or more, we should work to make transit more than 50% of our trips, as opposed to single family, or as opposed to single cars. And so, you know, when given the opportunity to, you know, let a developer develop something without a garage, that doesn't subsidize car and car use, I, you know, I think we should be kind of gearing towards that as much as possible. So, you know, giving that flexibility to create choice and options. And so, that's a, that's just kind of my sentiment on, on garages. Although, the downside is, we won't be founding the next Apple or Microsoft in a garage that doesn't exist.
Any other commissioners' questions or comments?
Thank you.
So it looks like we do have two people who have signed up to...
I had more, I had more comments.
Oh, go ahead.
It's a little slow to react. I had comments on the multifamily images that we had seen. I wanted to comment most, image, images seven, eight, and nine, my, my takeaway on where these fail are, the lack of street engagement, street presence, and the fact that they, they don't seem to encourage walkability in quite the same way that image number 10 does, for example, 17, 14. I think, in these projects, I noticed that there is a real flatness to, to the project, that there was not a variety of scale and hierarchy. It was difficult for me to tell where an entrance might be to a particular unit. It did not feel inviting, it didn't invite me in off the sidewalk to, to visit someone or to come home. And I think that the predominance of the car in image eight specifically felt inappropriate. Whereas in, in 10, you see more, more intent to carve out space for pedestrians, for, for scale, that felt more comfortable from a pedestrian point of view.
And just going back to just general comments on design, I really, I mean, I agree, I agree with a lot of the folks, that number 13, the craftsman-style townhomes were absolutely gorgeous, loved those a lot. But I also really liked number 14 as well, the townhouse, townhomes around a path, creating that kind of intricate, unique urban space. And I also really liked number 17 as well. Again, I, I think one of the values that I want to really impart here is that the townhome should really kind of be the new standard for the, for the home here in the city. We get that density allows transit, we get that density allows for the population growth, I mean, and, you know, making sure there's an unconstrained housing market's priority. We, the US has lost about 10% of its GDP growth due to housing constraints and regulations at the local level, so making sure that we're accommodating folks moving to areas, especially this one, is for me is a priority, and I see townhomes as a great way to preserve ownership opportunities and meet some of those density goals.
I would go back to seven, and maybe not the exact style or color or what you see there, but, you know, we're going to have neighbor, we're going to have this right next to a single-family or a duplex area. This kind of fits in that stepped up, I like that, so it's not like driving down Broadway in that new apartment complex we have, it just goes right straight up. You know, ha- having the steps, maybe we use that in a transitional zone between a single-family and non-single-family. Again, I'm not saying that her comments weren't wrong about the entryways and that kind of stuff, but what I appreciated about that picture is it, it shows and represents some of the things that we're going to have to do. There's a project going on next to the, potentially going on next to the high school, you know, and if you had those step-ups, it would take away from that look up and just see window, 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 window. So, that's what I was intrigued with number seven about, was the ability to mix it in with something that's lesser on each side of it, and not cause your neighbors to lose all the sunshine that we get every day.
Any other commissioners' comments? Okay, getting back to our comments, Earl Hall, wanted to speak on this, this item. If you could just, for the record, repeat your name and your address, please.
Yeah, I'm Earl Hall, I live at 3425 Colby. A couple of things I just wanted to make on this is, I really like our neighborhood, because it has a lot of different housing types in it. I mean, we have single-family homes right next to, we live in a 29-member duplex, our comp, our condominium. I, I would really hate to have, you know, just everything be the same. I mean, one of the criticisms I had of some of this was townhouses, oh, you got to townhouses, you know, we need to have townhouses broken up, maybe with single-family places. Maybe take some existing houses that we have, turn them into duplexes, you know, and outside, they look the same, but we may be able to put more families, you know, inside. I appreciate the effort trying to make things simpler. My wife, we have a place going in just across the street from us, they were down at the permitting place the other day, and my wife went, and she said, you know, with the flux right now, there's sort of, you know, what do we do, what do we do, you know, have to get it done. So, the, the more we can make things simple, you know, for people to understand better, I appreciate the effort of not having the 37 zones to get things down. So I just want to give a thanks on that. That's pretty much, thank you.
Thank you. I also have, if I can read this, is it Jean Sette Hewitt, Sette Hewitt?
Hi, I'm Jean Sette Hewitt. I live on 34th and Grand in the Norton Grand Historic Neighborhood. And, you know, it's, it's great to see some of the new standards that you guys are considering for development in our, in our neighborhood and in the city. We really appreciate that. One of the things that, I've been following this since the beginning, rethink zoning, and Alan came to our neighborhood meeting, which we really appreciate, and went to the workshop, and that was wonderful, too. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up is that as a layperson, reading what's going to be happening to the different zones and the changes, it's very difficult to go through all the documents and figure out how you can compare what we have currently to what we're going to be going to. So I would ask that maybe the planning department create some sort of zoning cheat sheet for each zone, so you know what you're, so you can pair apples to apples. So I know that now at our, in my neighborhood, we're allowed 20 to 29 units per acre. Is that going to change? And if so, what will that be? So that you can get... So that you can get knowledgeable comments about what the changes are gonna be happening, about the changes that are gonna be happening in our neighborhood. Also, during Metro Everett, there was a discussion about creating buffer zones for historic districts, and I don't see much of that being addressed here yet, and I hope that will be addressed. The changes in density and surrounding heights could threaten some historic homes, but, you know, we're waiting to find out exactly what's going to be planned before we can talk about that. And we would ask that you look at the Norton Grand area in particular, because it seems that there's gonna be an upzone from single-family to urban residential two for a large part of that neighborhood, and in some areas up to urban residential three, which is a big change. So we'd like you to consider the historic nature of our historic neighborhood and other historic neighborhoods when you're considering the changes for rethink zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Hawkinson?
Thank you. I'm Tina Hawkinson from the Evergreen Neighborhood, 325 South Cabot. And just an overall comment that I have about when we're planning development, it's not, what is our intention? It's not only to get more people into an area, but I would ask all of you to consider the placemaking aspect of things, like what, what kind of community areas are we kind of creating? Where people can gather and get to know their neighbors? And also, looking at South Everett, that whole area, there is really a lack of greenery and trees down there, and green, you know, that's gonna become more important when we're addressing climate change and drainage and clean air and just the general health of people is always improved in green areas. And it's typically in more, more green areas in the north area of the city, where people in the south end really need more green areas. And when I looked at some of these housing, you know, proposals, you know, a lot of them looked great, but I really always question, where are the trees gonna go? Where are the plantings gonna go? Where are the communal areas where people can gather for picnics, to, you know, get to know their neighbors, enjoy the outdoors? Anyway, those are just a couple of things, and I really appreciate all of these pictures and all of what you're considering. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's everybody I had signed up. Was there anybody else who wanted to speak to item one?
Got one more.
Yeah, if you wanna come forward.
Mine's more general, but I guess it pays.
You can come forward and if you'd wanna...
Thank you, sorry.
State your name and address, and Kathy, do you need them to fill out a...
I filled out...
Oh, you had one, okay, great.
Sorry. So first, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sorry, if you could just state your name and address.
Oh, sorry, Ken Reese, 3427 Norton Avenue.
Thank you.
And for all the work these gentlemen have done and your teams, I appreciate it. So I'm going to echo a little bit of what what Jean had just said, too. I live on Norton. I really do not want to see my neighborhood upzoned to UR2. I'm in the part of Norton that was, is today R1. I think the, the infrastructure in our area probably can't carry much more than it does today from a parking standpoint. Norton's full every night, I mean, completely full. There is no parking. I've been working with Tim, I believe his last name is Miller, with traffic engineering to try to find out if there's any way we could restripe to park on both sides. I'm told that our road is too narrow to allow that. You have to have at least 28 feet to park on one side, 36 feet to park on both sides. So by my own estimation, I know the Rucker Hill pretty well, that knocks out every street except for Nassau for being able to park on both sides without major infrastructure work. Alan, when you were at our neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago, you said really there's, there's no capital funds for, for widening the streets. So unless a developer chooses to do that, that's not gonna get done. So that means we really have a lack of off-street or on-street parking. That's not gonna get fixed anytime soon. I kinda doubt that there is much carrying capacity in the sewer and water systems that have been in place for a long number of years. I was talking to your folks who were out on the project, replacing one of the water mains up 35th Street, so he kind of gave me a little bit of the history there. They didn't upgrade the capacity, other than that the old cast-iron piping was so, I guess, rusted out on the inside that it, you know, it reduced the carrying capacity. So we got a little more capacity just by getting essentially clean pipes. So the historic characteristics of Norton are really why I moved there. I moved there four and a half years ago, moved into a beat-up old house. My wife wasn't too happy about it. Took three years of primarily our own blood, sweat, and tears rebuilding the house. In the last few years that I've been there, I've gotten to know most of my neighbors to the south of me, and found that our neighborhood 10, 15 years ago was not a very good place to be. There was a lot of drug houses on the 35 and 3600 block of Norton. Those neighbors banded together and got rid of them. They've, they've had a block party for about 12 years running, I guess, to kind of celebrate that, that victory. So there is a lot of passion, and I know, we've talked to you guys about the Norton Playfield issue as well, so understand that people in those several blocks of Norton, and I'm sure down at Grand as well, have put a lot of their lives into making that a better place to be. Really don't wanna see it change. I'd rather see the growth go on the transportation corridors, which to me seem to be Rucker and and Broadway. I don't think the transportation corridor needs to extend all the way up to Norton, basically to the alleyway between Norton and Nassau. Nassau's still R1, or going into the new planting zone, it's gonna be UR1, which doesn't make any sense at all. It really doesn't make any sense to put the hillside, the eastern part of Rucker Hill, between Friday and Federal into UR2 either. There's really no sidewalks, there's no alleyways, it's heavily sloped, I think you probably all realize that. So how did it end up in UR2, but the north side of, of Rucker Hill ended up in UR1? Geographically, there isn't a lot of difference. Lot-size wise, Rucker Hill goes from, house across the street to me is about 1,300 square feet to around an acre in my immediate area, and larger up on the hill if you go up to the Rucker Mansion and up to some of the Bar Greens property. So there is no real consistency with which to declare one section of Rucker Hill should be UR2 and which another section should be UR1. In my opinion, it should all be UR1. And if you just simply move the transportation corridor down closer to, to Rucker, I think it'll alleviate a lot of our fears. The density bonuses that come with the transportation overlay are what really are going to drive up, you know, the eventual destruction of the Norton Grand overlay. Maybe 10, 20 years from now, it may be longer, but there's no other reason to, to declare it to be UR2, change that zoning and have it within the transportation overlay unless we're planning on a lot more density there. And that density isn't gonna happen without taking out a lot of the older homes. So, yeah, that's all I got to say. I'll appeal to you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we'll move on to, that's everybody I had listed. Move on to agenda item number two.
All right, for agenda item number two was to go back through chapter five and the uses, and Commissioner Finch did his homework. And so we'll, thought we would kind of walk through, I guess, perhaps some of the comments and on that, if you wanna do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, so the first one that came up was, was a comment on the street type designations. We had a requirement that, where we had the TOD requirements apply 100 feet deep, and so it was something that came up in the comments about, about that, what the rationale was behind that, and, and I think at the last meeting, we admitted that we arbitrarily picked 100 feet because it was a nice even number kind of thing, and so I think we should probably take a look at that. I don't know if anyone, Commissioner Finch has a number in mind, if he has a feeling for anything at this point, or wants us to come back with a recommendation? Put you back on the hot seat there.
Yeah, well, I'm not an architect, I just play one on television, but I don't have a magic number in mind. My guess is there is a efficient depth that relates to building materials or types of uses at the street level, but it just strikes me that we don't wanna create kind of unnecessary barriers or impediments to redevelopment on these corners.
I think in some other cases, we've had somewhere in the nature of maybe 30 to 40 feet of depth, something like that, because it's the depth of a storefront or something.
Yep, and I would say that's, in my mind, I would say 35 to 40 feet.
Okay. We'll try to find some standards so they line up with other standards and so the numbers are in that range. All right. Next comment is about the review process, any requests to allow use as not otherwise permitted in the mixed urban zone. This has to do with the use of basement space. So the question was, should there be any uses that are flatly prohibited? And DS is my comment, and so I first said probably, but if we write a list of what would be prohibited, then the assumption is that anything else would be allowed. And so that's one of the problems when you write a prohibition, is that all of a sudden you, you flatly said what's prohibited, and now all of a sudden, now everything else must be allowed. And so you might leave something off that list. And so this was a process, and Alan's comment was that it was in the B3 zone before, and it's worked pretty well. It's been used sparingly, you know, maybe, I don't know, half a dozen times is probably being generous, maybe?
About that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think, so we, we thought on this one to just leave it as it was.
My comment would have, would be the staff burden than anything else, so if you guys are good with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah. An applicant, so this is modification of use regulation, the applicant may propose and the planning director may allow using review process two. And so the comment was deny or condition, so, so I think we'll work on some wording clarification, because it's also that we could allow, deny, or condition a project, so we'll clean that up.
And I would encourage other commissioners to chime in if they have any additional comments that aren't reflected in my notes.
I got one for section H.
They're coming.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
I'm ready, I'm ready. Put me in, coach.
So I gotta, I gotta keep on going through this, and so if we get to a point where you have another one, then, then let me know, so. Accessory uses, so accessory uses, facilities, and activities normally associated with the use listed as a permitted use in his owner, permitted as part of that permitted use on the same lot, it was suggested to, or an immediately adjacent lot as a principal structure. I commented usually accessory uses need to be on the same lot, the lots can be consolidated to achieve, otherwise that, the lot could be sold off and...
Oh, sorry, can I get a little more clarification, kind of real world scenario of what that would look like, just so I can anchor my understanding?
Well, you could have, let's say you have two lots that are both 50 foot wide or 35 feet wide, whatever, there are two legal lots, and you build your house on one and you build your garage on the other.
Okay.
Kind of thing, and then all of a sudden you sell off the property with the garage. And so no longer is it accessory. So, so either you could, so some kind of consolidation usually in our world needs to happen. So in general, we wouldn't agree with immediately adjacent lots. It could be a lot, but somehow you bind them together, and we, we always allow the binding together, covenant to tie them together. So if you wanna kind of create one lot out of two, we'll allow that to happen. And you can later separate if it meets the standards as well, but then you're gonna have to meet the standards and have a house on that other, other lot, for example.
Thank you.
All right, so just scrolling through, next comment, this is a good one. Reading the news, garage sales limited to two events per year. Half kidding, there was a situation where lemonade stand was busted by the health department up in my neck of the woods up north, and so they're passing state legislation. I think that's what you were responding to, to give an exemption for lemonade stand from permitting issues. And so my comment is, is this was food service, not land use, and, you know, I didn't think we needed to get into that kind of detail, so.
How would these, for example, pertain to like a pop-up establishment? If you're doing like, if you're doing a restaurant in a place that's really not zoned for a restaurant, but it's a temporary thing, and then you're be gone in like, maybe two weeks, or if you're doing a pop-up food trucks, like, for some of the more like avant-garde culinary sort of like things that happen, does, does this not apply to that, or is just, I, my, when he brought that up, I was thinking about that as well. Like, if you wanted to do a random pop-up restaurant in an old, like, in an old factory to kind of like, and do a theme around that, like, does that require the permitting? What's one of the rules around that? Is that prohibited?
Well, from a zoning perspective, if the zoning allows that use, then you could do that use. And, but from building code and other things, I mean, if, you know, depending on the event, they may have to get other permits for that. So there are some exceptions, some other, in the commercial industrial zones and some other temporary permits, a lot of things can be temporarily permitted, so if they have a small duration of time, there's authority within the existing code, and we're just transferring that across into here.
Okay.
But it would still have to be allowed by the zone.
Yeah, I mean, because it's not, like, a pop-up restaurant would not be, like, there's explicit call-outs for amusement rides, carnivals, parking lot sales, those are specifically denoted in that, but like, would, like, pop-up, like, do, does a pop-up restaurant have to be explicitly denoted in it, or is it, would it be akin to something else enough that they can say, oh, we can carry that authority over and allow that?
You know, these, this list of uses, well, I guess it is a commercial industrial zone, so. I was thinking that Christmas tree lots are, some of these things are quite often in residential zones, actually, where you allow a commercial use, but, I mean, a restaurant's permitted in, in the commercial zones, and so it's permitted, so. So we don't get into the temporary, whether it's temporary or not, that's, that's not something that we look at from a zoning perspective.
Okay.
Next comment was focusing on bed and breakfast ins, I guess, in the light industrial zones. And so Commissioner Finch struck out, we had administrative use in the industrial zones for, for a bed and breakfast. Existing B&Bs are legally not conforming, a new one should be in appropriately zoned areas. And so, yeah, I think that, you know, industrial lands are for that purpose. We're tending to, to say that there are some accept, some allowances for existing homes in some of these areas, and so we allowed a bed and breakfast, but I, I think that's a reasonable thing if other commissioners wanna move that out of there and we can just prohibit it.
Well, I was gonna start a bed and breakfast above like a paint factory, but I guess I, guess I'll put my dreams on, on hold.
There are better locations.
Fair.
That pop-up restaurant, though.
That pop-up restaurant.
And then dormitory, I like the required affiliation with institutions, how's the affiliation established and tracked, and, and so application materials is how we look at that, and then it's basically a complaint-driven process if any issue comes up after occupancy, so.
Before the dwelling microhousing, it's a little bit further down. Out of curiosity, would, would, like, is, I mean, I, I see, I understand, like, as long as it, in my mind, as long as it conforms with the overall shape and like, form of the building, and mass of the building in the area, I mean, I think it could, I think we consider, we should consider allowing it in a transit overlay, at least in UR2. With the transit overlay, you have less requirements for parking, you know, just trying to give more options for folks to, you know, to find someplace to, you know, live as opposed, and let the market kind of create that housing. So I just kind of wanted to open the... So I just kind of wanted to open the, open up to the commission and see what they thought about that, and see if there's any feedback from other commissioners on that.
For example, would you, if you had a very small existing structure divided into a duplex of two micro units, is that what you mean?
Or just saying, I mean, with the, with the micro housing, you have, it's just, it's one inhabitable room, bath, closet, storage area, and, and so, you know, if you were able to fit within the, fit within, like, the mass of the, of the existing overlay, like, not exceeding two and a half floors, like, we would have more people there than you would in a traditional duplex, or, or a single unit home there, but you would have that, but you'd kind of mitigate some of the parking concerns by making sure it goes into a transit overlay. That way, you know, you can just, you know, find, give, create, allow the market to create more options for housing people.
In what zone?
Just the UR two, in a transit overlay. So not in UR two outside the transit overlay, because we're talking about, like, adding more folks into the area, but, you know, we want to mitigate the parking concerns.
Isn't that simply a multifamily building in that case?
I mean, as long as it would conform, in my mind, as long as it conforms with the mass of the building around it, so not exceeding two and a half floors, and it would be somewhat of a, it would be, it would, so it wouldn't have the physical appearance of multifamily, but it would just create more housing options. And within the transit overlay, it's close enough to transit so that we don't have as many people seeking to utilize cars. They can, they have a transit option to go there, so we're trying to mitigate the parking impact as well.
I think my, the only red flag I would have for exterior compatibility is you start adding more than two entrances, for example, and where do they go? Are you going to start adding language about exterior stairs, and what is appropriate there? It starts to...
It just becomes a multifamily building.
It's a multifamily building.
I think that there's, there are so many opportunities for increased density in this city, that I don't think we need to start contorting our single unit zoning to accommodate for building types that we easily accommodate for in areas with a lot of fallow land.
I think the simplification of the duplex unit is the most appropriate, the side-by-side and stacked in the transit overlay. I think that that's probably as complex as it really needs to get in that kind of, that scale.
And just one more question, just for feedback. I mean, like, one of the other things I was thinking about when I was thinking of this is that, you know, like, trying to find, give the market space to just drive down that rental price point. Like, I don't need a big home, I need a, like, you know, because studios here now are still, like, twelve hundred dollars a month.
I think that's where the ADU comes in, though, is, especially if we're offering owner opportunity for those kinds of units.
Well, and new construction is not going to be paving the way for affordable units unless they're subsidized. So more housing, greater supply, may lead to a reduction in rent, or a plateauing in rent in existing housing stock. But given the cost of new building materials, you're not going to have a new unit come online that has lower rent than existing units. That math just doesn't work.
Yeah, so there's, so we, so like, one of the challenges we have is, like, it's just really, really, really hard for the market to create new housing that is at a lower price point than, even no matter, like, how we kind of twist and consort, because like...
Unless it's subsidized, I don't see a path to rental economics for new construction that is less than existing construction. It's just common sense. Can we go back, David, to the dormitory comment? The enforcement is, if complaints are made, and we track it with application materials, would this be appropriate for a covenant as well, or a certificate of occupancy conditioned upon the affiliation with an institution?
It would be required at the time of permitting that it be affiliated, and so that would probably be a condition of, the approval would be to tie it to that institution. Now, if it's on a separate piece of property, a block away from the institution, and it were to be sold to somebody who just wanted to create it to a micro housing project, then they would just have to meet all the standards for micro housing. If it was in a zone that didn't allow for it, and I'm looking up here at the dormitory, and it looks like if it was in the UR three zone, micro housing is permitted in the UR four zone. If it was a dormitory in the UR three zone, then to be converted to some other type of housing use, it would have to meet the code standards for that UR three zone. And so it would either do that through permitting, or if they did it without permits, then through enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously a challenge there if it is a, an outlier parcel that's not contiguous, and it is sold, I mean, it's difficult to track that.
It is difficult to track that. We can put covenants on properties like this, but we don't always know when they are sold and...
Right. However, lenders would see covenants if it was untitled.
Correct.
So it's just something to think about, because there is an opportunity there for an investment bait and switch.
Right. That's a good point.
I just want to make a quick comment, caused me to, from what Commissioner McGinn said earlier, the definition of dwelling, micro unit, micro housing, I've been reading over it and over it, and it seems a little confusing to me, it does seem to imply a single structure with just one room, rather than several grouped together, which I think is what...
I think if we just eliminate the word independent, if it says a single residential dwelling unit consisting of one habitable room, but I think it's the word independent that suggests that it is a single building unto itself.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Yeah, yeah, we can work on it. The reason for independent is that it's not group housing where they have a shared community kitchen, for example. So it functions as an independent unit, it doesn't have a bathroom down the hallway, things like that, so. But we can talk about the structure, that this independent unit is in a multifamily building.
Okay, yeah, maybe a single residential dwelling unit. When, it does specifically say consisting of one habitable room. Maybe excluding kitchen, bath, maybe rewording that part to...
Or consisting of multiple one...
Right.
Yeah, consisting of multiple one habitable rooms, or single.
Multiple, single, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway.
All right, so, so kind of going down the list, family home, daycare, same comments as before about in the industrial zone, not having that within a industrial zone. But the one thing is, if we do allow residential, which we do, state law requires us to allow this use. And so the footnote that we had in this, this one, says it's only within an existing dwelling. So, so there are existing homes within light industrial areas, and they could do a family home, daycare, because state law requires us wherever a single family home is to allow that. So, an existing building, not to establish new. So I think this one's pointing to the daycare, family home, dense use permitted outright in the UR one and two zones, and so, so there are specific RCWs, so we, we could, we cannot prohibit family daycare provider, which is defined as not more than twelve children pursuant to the RCWs. So same thing within the group housing, we, we set up this category of three group housing based on how many persons are within that, and so the first category was up to six, and then seven to sixteen, and then over sixteen. So again, in there, it's kind of the same thing, is that we have to permit those types of facilities wherever we allow single family homes under the RCWs. In the group...
David?
Yeah.
In, in the UR one zone and UR two zones, is there any limitation, aside from these definitions, as to the number of unrelated people living in a structure?
Not under the group housing definition, but in the definition of family, which any dwelling is limited to a family. And so that definition allows up to four unrelated adults and their related minor children, or up to eight disabled unrelated adults.
And the legislature might change that this year, too. We'll see. And the group housing category two, the seven to sixteen, so suggestion to do that as a conditional use. Sixteen people plus staff on a single family lot, consider eliminating, given the intensity of the use. And some of the locations here might be in transit overlay, and kind of feeling was that the public hearing process would really require that review and compatibility, and so to do a conditional use permit for that, there are, sometimes there's even domestic violence shelters, there are safe houses that go within neighborhoods, kind of thing, they try to fit in, and other things, and so there are sometimes where these things can work within the neighborhood, and so the conditional use permit process, I think, would ferret out those things that don't fit that neighborhood. We're looking at changing that. Group housing temporary shelter. So Commissioner Finch is considering making this a review process three, or a conditional use permit in the UR one and UR two, given the intensity of the zone, contrasted with the majority of uses. And so the definition of tiny house, first off, comes from 2019 legislation. So we don't allow a tiny house community currently within the structure of what we've put together in there, but the building code does allow a tiny house. They'd be, well, if the building codes change to allow tiny homes, because they currently don't allow them, they'd be permitted like any other single family home. So a tiny home, if it becomes permitted under the building code, then we have to treat it like a single family home. So same, same kind of responses, the daycares and some of the other group housing things, that we have to treat it like a single family home, if they amend the, the building codes. The comment about additional review processes, you know, something to consider, one of the reasons that we had it not as a conditional use permit in a public hearing, is that some of the temporary uses might be a safe parking lot at a church, and so we didn't want to kind of go too overboard with this. So some of them definitely probably, you know, really should be a public hearing. There could be some pretty good temporary shelters that, that could be proposed, that Alan, if that comes in when he's the planning director, would probably be happy that it would go to the hearing examiner, because it might be a, what we call LULU, is a locally unwanted land use kind of thing. But some of these other ones are, are smaller, so they're, they're safe parking lots and things like that, so we didn't want to kind of overburden that process.
Would this also pertain to say, I mean, the, the reason I ask, because in my army life right now, I'm going through a disaster and humanitarian assistance course, and I'm actually doing, we're doing a report on the big ones, it's supposed to happen here, like, you know, but like, in, in the case of flooding, natural disasters, would, like, setting up temporary humanitarian housing in these areas, would that fall under this as well?
No, that, one of those sections that we talked about, the exemptions earlier, the kind of all the wording up front of all these tables, it actually has an exemption for emergencies, for disasters, things like that, so.
David, can you give a little more color on the, on the tiny house comment? Are you saying that if tiny houses are approved, they would be limited to the same site requirements as a, the zone in which they're in?
Correct.
Okay, so setbacks would apply, maximum densities would apply, number, I should say, number of dwelling units would apply, that's the thing?
Correct.
Would just be a smaller format home?
Yeah, so, you know, the idea of the tiny house with communities right now, we don't really have that provision, other than this, I think, to go through the temporary shelter and to have some of those accommodations for, for a longer period of time. And so to do that would require more notice and process. So there is a thing in the legislation about tiny house communities, that we have to allow tiny homes wherever RV parks are allowed, so that, an RV or mobile home park, manufactured home park, is that you can replace that home with a tiny home, wherever those are allowed. But we can't put some standards, so if there's, if it doesn't have, you know, bathroom facility, there has to be some kind of group shared bathroom facility as part of that, that area. So. And we did have some of those standards, we walked through some of the chapter thirteen standards, I think a month ago, so if you want to go back to the chapter thirteen standards that we had, specific uses, those were some of those in there. Okay, so group housing temporary shelter, actually, this is, again, this is a larger sponsored group housing temporary shelter situation, and so we had a conditional use permit in the UR one and two zones. And in this case, temporary uses and having that, Commissioner Finch's comment was not appropriate in, in this, the UR one and UR two zones, or in the high-impact industrial. And I think that the high-impact industrial, again, this might be where we want to have some of the stuff as a temporary use. Perhaps it might fit for as a temporary thing, so. Does it impact the compatibility in that area, and is that a long-term loss of the industrial lands potentially?
I, I understand that. It just seemed like the, the high-intensity nature of the industrial use would be in conflict with what you're going for in that use. Somebody, very smart ones, told me, his initials are Alan Giffen. There's nothing more permanent than a temporary use.
Very true.
I remember that, too.
If I may jump in, with regards to the conditional, like, conditional use permit, I, I think, you know, I mean, aren't churches, wouldn't churches fall into the UR one, within the UR one and UR two land use category, so?
It could, yes.
Okay, so have, giving the opportunity for that, for those churches to meet their mission set, like, kind of what, you know, if they choose to make their, their mission to address homelessness, like, providing that kind of level of view would be appropriate, then, for, for that situation, at least I believe so, because it, that it's already as stated.
Okay.
Before you go on, I mean, if you're moving on too far, I'm interested in the live-work.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's category, and there's a comment that broadening, to have spaces that have a dual function of workspace and a living space are similar. And, you know, the original intent of a lot of the live-work was, was really about the industrial lands, and, and allowing residential to go into the industrial, so artist lofts, things like that, for, for people doing those things. And so, so this was written as a use into the code that allows that in some of those commercial industrial areas versus in the residential categories. And so, so that's one of the reasons that it's, it's defined as that, is that it really is predominantly a workspace secondary as a residence. The reality is, I don't think we have any standards that define how much is one or the other type of thing, but, but really, there needs to be a work, work element to it, integrated unit.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I think that my comment had more to do with balancing the definition, given the challenge of filling ground floor retail spaces. And so I anticipate that as it becomes harder and harder to fill ground floor retail spaces, we will see more units that function as both living and working spaces.
Yeah, in most of our commercial zones, we allow residential on the ground floor, anyhow. So again, a lot of times, this is really an industrial zones to allow that residential component. And I think that's where it was originally, was probably in the E one, or the Everett Station.
Everett Station.
Excuse me, not E one, yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, it's just, I, I recognize the allowance of the use, however, on certain corridors, those residential uses are not allowed, and so that's why live-work, I think, becomes important.
Yeah, gotcha.
If I may, so one thing I really, like, one of the pieces of zoning in here that I think is very clever, unique, I like a lot, is the neighborhood businesses. It adds a community and, like, neighborhood amenity, in my mind, and I like how live-work is zoned in there, to be allowed in there. But I also think that, you know, neighborhoods change, they grow, we see opportunities, so I kind of want to explore the idea of authorizing it in the UR two zone as well. So you can have a neighborhood coffee shop that serves the community and have the owner, instead of having to, you know, put a, you know, put a, you know, pay rent on it in addition to their, whatever, like, their property are, they're setting it up at home. And I think it's an opportunity to, you know, provide neighborhood amenities to help neighborhoods out, and putting it in kind of a conditional or the, or kind of under review, might allow for the proper usage in that. And so it's, it's, so it meets the intent to serve the neighborhood. I just wanted to get Commissioner's thoughts on, on that.
I had similar comments in subsequent uses for the same reason that, for the purpose of walkability in our communities and creating a nice neighborhood quality, that we may want to allow certain business types to operate within all residential zones with the appropriate community engagement and notification.
I ju, I just think back to a, you know, it's, it is.
Cafe Zippies.
Cafe Zippies.
I love that place.
I, I think back to, you know, a story at Housing Help, like, it, it's harder and harder to bootstrap yourself up these days. But one of the families that came to us in, to Housing Help from Iraq, decided to start baking bread in their apartment and selling it, and they were going like gangbusters until we actually had to, to shut them down. Like, you can't do that, it's not authorized here, the health, the health, the Somish Health Commission said, no, they can't do it, they weren't given the authority, right, permits. And so, I mean, seeing an opportunity for somebody to co-locate two important things, their work and their home, to, you know, bring down overhead costs and, you know, start building a future for themselves, I think is a, you know, something that we should look into, so. That was another, that was another thought that went into, you know, making it more, making that live-work more accessible in, in more places, again, under certain conditions and with certain review, to make sure that it's meeting the intent, serving the community.
I, I certainly think that it would be easy to create parameters around business types, you know, ones that would be more appropriate for these neighborhood settings, but I do think that they should be encouraged and, at the very least, allowed.
We can bring back some alternatives for you to look at.
Thank you.
I also have further down, rooming houses. I was just kind of curious for the UR three, you know, try, again, like, we've had the conversation around, at least the market, being, having a lot of challenges creating, you know, you know, affordable housing, but this could be a tool to start mitigating the growth of rent, giving people different options, as well as for non-market, non-market actors to also have a opportunity to build there and, you know, shifting it over from, you know, not conditional use, but, you know, after, from review, down to just a permitted use would try to make, would make staff.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I, I think that it's permitted in UR four, and if it undergoes administrative review in UR three, given the texture of a UR three zone, I think it makes sense to have the staff review.
Yeah, the UR three zones are generally not going to be in high-transit areas, and so that's why we made it administrative in the UR three.
Okay. Okay, so jumping into the commercial. Commercial uses, yeah, so everything. Commercial, all right, so lodging, hotels, motels, we, these are old definitions, I think, struggling with the difference between them, kind of thing, so, yeah, we can, we can combine these, these into one definition. Whereas my son, when he was young, he called it, are we gonna stay at the home motel? So. So we can work on that. And then, so offices excluding clinics, social or human service facilities, had that as a administrative use within the UR four zone. And so on a TOD street. Explain the office area limitation is the concern, floor area, visible frontage, intensity of use doesn't seem to be the issue. This office and residential uses peak at different periods, fine with Rev. Two, just unclear about the footnote, and the footnote. So this is a residential zone, primary use, and I think the footnote one, if I zoom down, footnote one is only on the residential mixed-use corridors or TOD streets. So these are areas, we, we started this in Metro Everett, where places like Everett Avenue and some places along Colby that are zoned for residential uses, the predominant use, do allow some of these ground-floor uses along those corridors. And so, so we, we have the allowance on the ground floor, but then there has to be a residential component as part of that. I don't know if that answered the question.
It's really the fifty percent threshold was my question, I mean.
Oh, that it had to be fifty percent?
That the, that the residential component had to be at least fifty percent of the gross floor area. And maybe this can be addressed in the review process, but, you know, in some cases, that could be limiting the overall development envelope of that parcel.
It, it could, we were trying to do the primary use, but this is also one of the standards that can be modified, so if there is a, a reason for adjustment, let's say someone's converting an existing house and they want to do the ground floor into a restaurant or bookstore or something like that, and have residential above, kind of thing, but the ground floor has a bigger footprint, so that might be a modification.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, the other thing that Alan commented about here, too, is that we're limiting the clinic office overlays, so that's important to note. In some of these areas where we haven't rezoned it to commercial, we're rezoning it to urban residential, we're keeping a residential classification, but we put that street designation on it, so it allows for these offices to be on the ground floor in those areas. But as they redevelop, if they redevelop, they're gonna have to put a residential component as part of that. All right, so veterinary clinics, size limitation on.
You know, I, I just want a little bit of clarity, because the footnote for eighteen says it's not authorized in, you know, Metro Everett. But for the most part, a lot of the places that we are, that it's, you know, conditional use is mixed, is, you know, mixed use, you know, we're seeking to build the same kind of built environment for, as, as we have in, you know, Metro Everett. So I don't know why we'd want to just continue to promote more parking where we want to add, or just authorize the creation of new commercial parking where we want to add a lot more density, like around the Everett Mall, up along Broadway, up north by the college. And so I don't know why it's, would be, it wouldn't be a, you know, conditional use. And just bring it into confor, into conformity with the Metro Everett standards.
So footnote eighteen says that Metro Everett surface parking lots are prohibited as a principal use.
Exactly.
So, okay.
So, I mean, from my understanding, that, you know, with other places that are mixed use, outside of Metro Everett, you can still put a, you know, service area parking lot in, that brand-new, under new construction, correct?
It could, is a commercial, so this is a commercial parking, and then, I mean, we'll have the landscape and the access standards, the value of the dirt, and some of the places may not be worth putting it all to surface parking, you know, they, they might do something else.
My, my question is, though, like, if we are, but all those places that we have, it mixed-use, it seems like, around the Everett Mall, up, up Broadway, near the college, seems, in my understanding, we're trying to get a similar built environment as we have in downtown Everett, density, you know, more transit-oriented, why are, like, my question is, like, why wouldn't we, why are we just slapped at, like, permitting and a big parking lot to go in the way and kind of have that dual standard? I mean, isn't the intent the same across the board?
This is, a, a commercial parking lot is just a standalone parking lot. We don't see too many of those built in the city, especially, you know, in areas that already have a lot of their own required off-street parking provided on their own lot in Everett Mallway or along Broadway or other corridors. And so I can't think of a single commercial parking lot that isn't in, in or near the downtown. So, you know, it's not the kind of thing that is really market-driven where people will do that. It's a permitted use, it, it's something that, you know, I appreciate the point, but it's, it's already prohibited as a standalone use now in Metro. So it's, it's really about the only place where there would even be a market for one at, at this point.
And I think as the light rail stations, you know, come on board and we know where they're at, I think those types of concepts can get expanded to other places, so it's not just Metro, it might be around the light rail stations as well, so I think those are opportunities down the road.
Okay.
So veterinary.
Sorry, I'm gonna do it one more time before we get, I know we all want to get to veterinary. So the retail services, under nineteen, you know, actually, this dovetails off a point that, you know, Commissioner Finch made earlier, it's becoming a lot, a lot more difficult to fill retail space. And in nineteen, for our mixed-use areas, we have a lot of prohibitions on, on building, on retail types that I don't find, you know, I don't see a particular reason or drive, especially around thrift shops. I mean, you know, with, with the idea that, you know, with the way a lot of, like, fashion industry shifting, recycling of clothes, cycling through clothes is becoming more and more just part of the fashion landscape. And it also, you know, tattoo parlors are, are prohibited there as well, you know, I don't, I don't think those are a particularly taboo industry as well. Same with, you know, pot shops, and, and so maybe looking at what those, what those restrictions are, and kind of, I kind of want to just raise a question of why some of them are, are there.
This is a carryover from some B-three zone regulations that we used to have before, pre-Metro, and that's a good question as to whether or not these are all, need to be prohibited on some of these streets, we'll take another look at that.
I think the definition is fine, the footnote is fine the way it is, but feel free to take another look at it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring something back.
I mean, how else will Macklemore, where will you find a place to pop tags here in Everett, if we don't have more thrift shops in our trans, in our, in our mixed-use areas? I think he's, I almost ran, literally almost ran into his car in Seattle getting out of the parking lot. Yeah.
Commercial parking lot?
A, yes, it was a commercial parking lot. That's why I'm very skeptical of them.
Are you ready for veterinary clinics? All right, just wanted to check. So the comment here is, consider size limitation, overnight restriction, and a review process, given, this was commenting on the neighborhood business. And, yeah, I think that, that, that probably has some, some merit there. I think it's a great business to have within neighborhood business things, I mean, it's, you know, cafes and things like that, and your pets are probably the most essential things that, you know, food, food and pets are the most essential things to be close to your home, so. So we could certainly look at some, some standards if that's good for folks. All right, so moving on to industrial uses. So aggregates extraction, we had a note that says permitted as legal non-conforming use. Yeah, and that's, so his comment was, yeah, all, all legal not conforming uses are permitted to continue unless there's a, you know, sunset provision or a amortization provision in the code. And so we don't necessarily need that as a development regulation, and we might even take it out of the use category. I think we define it as a prohibited use upfront anyhow, so we can, we can get rid of one use and, and you can keep that in your back pockets for another use to add. Next comment was on heliport, presence of fueling capacity would be appropriately addressed in the context of the public hearing. Heliport has refueling capabilities whereas a helipad or helis stopper takeoff and landing, and so, so, yeah, the entire operation would be considered in the permitting, and so they'd have to identify the full extent of, of fueling facilities and things like that as part of that. Next comment is on cemeteries. So one of the comments was in agricultural land, and, oh, and, and on businesses as well. So I think in the business zone, we had it as administrative, and I think the suggestion was to go to a public hearing, because it's not a real good use of land there, but then consider perhaps it in our agricultural areas. So I think that's, I, I would imagine we're not building more cemeteries in our business zones anyhow, but good thing to look at. And then food bank, some comments, some changes in some of these areas, so going from, rather than administrative or permitted, to a higher review process for, for a food bank.
With regards to the food bank, you mean, I don't mind a conditional use, but, you know, a lot of times churches operate these, and they're in the UR, UR one, UR two zones, so to, you know, for these churches, you know, the opportunity to meet their mission, would at least let them, I would say, give them a chance to make their case on how they're gonna manage it.
They would, so, but if they had to do it through a conditional use permit process, I, you know, it is more time and it's more money to do that, so just need to be aware. So if we change these to a higher level of review, our fees are, I don't know what they are, but they're, they're, they're more for a conditional use permit than they are for administrative review process.
In, in that case, then, administrative review, I just, I would, I would say that for, and church properties, you know, having their, having the opportunity for them in the most cost-effective way to go to, to make a case for something that's slightly out of the, that is out of the normal threshold for what's expected in that area. But, you know, again, I, it's important that they, to them, for them to meet, like, what their mission council deems, if they're to feed the poor and help them.
I guess my thinking there was, as it relates to neighborhood business, we're talking about locating a food bank within a neighborhood, so it strikes me that it should be a higher threshold. Same with, with business and mixed-use or, or the MU zone. You know, we're trying to encourage a higher density of jobs in the business areas of downtown, and so while I, I think it's important to accommodate for food banks in areas throughout the city, it just needs to be appropriately cited. And so I think that higher level of review will in some ways ensure that there are compatible uses where the sites are being selected.
So next thing is places of worship, religious facility and places of worship. So same things about the light industrial and heavy-impact industries, incompatible and higher-intensity economic uses there, you know, and so probably, you know, I think that, again, I think that's worth considering, in that it's not something that necessarily is what our use. in that it's, it's not something that necessarily is what our use of that land really is best for probably in those areas.
With regards to, if, if we have, if there's nothing else to be said for places of worship, with regards to schools in high impact industry, I know it's not permitted there, but does that take into account, say for example, someone from the trades hoping to set up a, a training facility in that area, you know, if you're working in a trade that corresponds with the industry that occurs there?
If they're doing it within, within their complex, I think we would consider that just as an accessory use.
Okay.
Within that. If they're establishing as a principal use, then that might be an issue.
I, I mean, it, it could be a principal use, I mean, I, I doubt the, I doubt the lots and land would allow it, but, because I don't think there would be a school that big, but I, I could foresee maybe not, there being, like, would, would we have the tools to allow and address for that? Because if, if a standalone institution, say a, a trade school, wanted to open up on its own and be able to serve multiple different, different companies in that heavy, heavy impact industry area, like, they would be doing that on their own and it would be ideally located for them to do that service. I mean, has, do we have, has anyone consulted with like trade schools at all and how they prefer to, you know, co-locate?
Have not, at this point. You know, again, when we built this use table in large measure, we're using the existing uses and transferring them across the new zone structure. So I imagine as we looked at our existing code, we probably don't allow the schools within the heavy industry, so. Okay, so the next one was on the use which is solid waste transfer station, including hazardous waste. We had administrative in the LI one and two zones. So kind of looked at a public hearing issue, I think that was, the comment was to go to conditional use and Alan's comments was particularly solid waste transfer station has a lot more traffic and potential order impacts and that might be something we'd take a look at listing separately and the other uses have a simpler review process. We do, under state regulations, hazardous waste has to be permitted in all the industrial zones. Oh, he's still kept the door, okay, got more. Okay, I went past one?
No, 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 sorry, you landed right where I was.
Oh, private clubs?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, so this is another one that's kind of a leftover from the downtown B three zoning before we did Metro Everett, these were standards that were, well, and I think it was throughout the city, but clubs, lodges and similar uses. So the comment was, should ground floor use be subject to conditional use permit in the mixed urban LI, maybe even neighborhood business? Okay, maybe not neighborhood business. And so the footnotes in here prohibited ground floor in the TOD and pedestrian streets. And so I didn't really know what the, the comment was and then Alan was, you know, I think this is one of the things that we kind of struggle with in several of these things is, is how these are treated and how they really have evolved over time as well, kind of thing, so. Any input, so private clubs or lodges or anything from Masons to Sons of Norway to?
VFW.
VFW, yeah, union halls.
I mean, I, when I read this and I noticed, when I saw the note, for me, what I saw and what stuck out in my brain was, I, what I think the Elks Lodge in downtown Everett, I think is a really good use of like preserving community space on the floor for a, an organization and then having housing above it and finding ways to, you know, make sure that we have, that we can support that and have that community space on, you know, accessible. And I'm kind of curious as to, you know, what's the best way to do that and how can we, you know, advance that goal?
Yeah, we, we do allow that within like the mixed urban, but the, the footnotes are kind of a restriction on the TOD and pedestrian streets because in some of these cases, I mean, they're for membership only and so not the general public could go there and so that was the, the reason for some of those restrictions.
Yeah, and my thinking was that it's just becoming more and more difficult to fill retail streets in vibrant neighborhoods and so as we're thinking about developing downtown Everett, that, just given the nature of a private club, there is some economic support behind the viability of that use and so give them a chance. That was my thinking.
And not have a restriction on the street?
Well, I mean, I think it's worth looking at, you know, if you think about a bail bonds operation or a fraternal organization, I'm gonna go with fraternal organization.
Here, here.
And again, these are kind of holdovers from old downtown zoning and a few other zones that have been around probably for about 20, 30 years in the code, so. As we're rethinking zoning, we can rethink these standards. And that's it, yeah.
I have one more question, I didn't see a classification for grocery, including convenience stores, did I miss it?
Retail.
Yeah, it's just retail.
It's just lumped in general retail. I think, I just want to reiterate that I think we should make allowances for those kinds of things to exist within the UR zones.
I agree, I, I mean, would, would the, would like a small bodega be authorized in neighborhood business or the live work?
Probably not in a live work, I mean, that's, that's really kind of a very small scale type of a, a client based visiting use, you know, might have an accountant or some, something like that in a live work, but something that has a little bit more traffic like that is either going to be something that's gonna need parking that you don't get with the live work or if it was in the context of a neighborhood area, I mean, if we have a large neighborhood area that doesn't have any retail zones and you found the right spot for a small retail type of a use through some other process that we might insert into our code, you know, that would allow for some public notice and, and community input, then, you know, that might be one way of looking at it. We, the, the whole viability of retail thing comes, comes up again, so it's kind of hard for the neighborhood retailers that we've seen them on and pop stores that used to be in Everett, most of them have closed down, there's a few left and, you know, they do provide a convenience to the neighborhood, but it's really hard for them to make it.
Oh yeah, I mean, absolutely, but I, I, you know, my experience back in DC, there were two bodegas about two blocks away from where I lived and I, they could see each other and I never, I, first of all, they were rivals, so I, I would always make sure that no, and the store owner who would stand out in front wouldn't see me go into the other, because when that happened, I get yelled at. But that being said, they were fantastic convenience and the, I mean, I, I think it's kind of worth fleshing out to see how we could do that and, and with, with the live work possibility or the neighborhood business possibility, having that, you know, housing above your, you know, your housing above that community, that neighborhood amenity and maybe worth trying to explore under additional review. Are there any additional thoughts?
It's a whole walkable neighborhood, it's, I don't have to get my car and drive to QFC. But as the densities go, I think that'll.
Yeah, so I think that the, the NB zone obviously provides for that and I think the comment from, the, the public comment we had earlier about creating opportunities for community in the context of newfound density, I think that's a, along those same lines. So I think what Alan identified is a, a path to that in the form of review, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I really agree.
Good spot, Krishna, yeah, good spot.
We got an idea.
Yeah, one of them is, we've talked about that, about the criteria for neighborhood business zones and so we have a lot of nonconforming that are out there. So one possibility is without having to do a comprehensive plan amendment, someone could do a rezone in a, in, in an area that the comp plan says is residential, but they could go to a neighborhood business zone. So that's one possibility that we could help with things. The other one I'm gonna point out is something that was put into the code in 2015, I believe, is this, or 16, is adaptive reuse of nonresidential buildings. And that kind of got buried into another section, wasn't in the use tables, but this is a church that's no longer, you know, going and they want to sell it, kind of thing, that it's an adaptive reuse of a, some other facility that's lot, you know, no longer being used for that purpose, it can go into all these different things that we're talking about, whether it's a cafe or, you know, to a music venue, things like that, so those types of things. And so we have that now listed as a use so that people can find that in there, so. So that might be a good thing, I think new construction for some of these uses, I think that the market and the cost and some things, I think it's probably would be pretty challenging for new construction, so I think you're really talking about retrofit of, of things.
I'd agree.
All the bodegas I went to were definitely retrofits. Yeah, the best really are and they have a cap.
So, so we got through all the comments, if there's more as we go through, I, one of the things I skipped over is we have had some conversations with the mayor's office about short term rentals and so we'll probably have some, some changes in terms of the permitting and allowing that a little bit more, more permissive for short term rentals, basically your vacation rental homes, that kind of thing, and so we'll probably see some changes that we'll be bringing back to you down the road, so.
David, with technology out there, I don't want to belabor this meeting, but what, when drone zones and package pickup and package storage, it's, you know, it's some of the way that they're able to take traffic off the streets and do some of those things and will those be addressed when that technology gets here or, I, I didn't see anything in there that really, I mean, FedEx and who's our friend Bezos, Amazon are already doing, bring a semi, leave it in QFC's parking lot, I, I'm making this up, they, I don't know that they know, and then five trucks go there as opposed to 25 trucks going back into the warehouse and they're, they're just doing different things like that. Will, will that be changed when that technology and those methods get here?
When we understand those types of uses better and their impacts and, you know, whether or not that's a good thing or a bad thing or how to regulate it, then we would react at that time.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to anticipate those things in advance.
So we didn't, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
We can always amend the code later.
Good, thank you. Do you have questions, comments? We are really close to our time, it's supposed to be, the public comments, I don't have anything on this topic.
Additional items?
Not from staff.
Thank you very much for your time.
Alright, thank you and thank you everybody, that will conclude and adjourn the meeting.